Recording in progress.
All right, welcome Woodbury to the Village Board meeting of July 18, 2023. Will everyone please rise to the verge of allegiance and among the silence for paneling music in comparison to the February flooding? I pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, in the highest law with liberty and justice for all. All right, ladies and gentlemen. So as I always do, I will begin by introducing our village board trustees, starting at Row 1, with trustee Christopher Graziano. Next to him is trustee Victor. Next to him is trustee Susan Sturriella. Next to her is Deputy Mayor Tara Murek. Next to me to my right is village clerk Desrae Poppen, and I am Andrew Jana Maza, the mayor. So we are going to jump right into our public hearing for Local Law 1 of 2023. It's been a long time coming. Introductory Local Law 1 of 2023 entitled Short Term Rentals. Public hearing is being continued on May 25th, 2023, meeting to entertain public comments on introductory Local Law 1 of 2023, which would amend the village code by creating a new chapter, 255, entitled Short Term Rentals. And at this time, what I will do is open it up to the public. So starting in the room here, there's not a lot of people here, so if you want to go to the podium, introduce yourself.
Anyone want to? My name is Amy Silvino, I live in Silicon Valley. I was here at the May 25th meeting, and I want to appreciate, I want to thank you guys for the work that you did. You listen to us, and that's appreciated. That doesn't always happen. There are still a couple of things that really stood out to me as potential problems, particularly that everything is for an overnight rental, and we've got 24 hours as the beginning point for a lot of things, that not only lets people say, well, I don't need a permit because my check-in time is four and my checkout time is three, so it's not 24 hours. But you also have the short-term rentals of people that are renting out their pools on Swimpli and things like that. So I would propose that that be from zero hours to 31 days. Because otherwise, there's a whole lot of ways that the, it looks like, specifically on page 3, item G, I'm concerned about what this means. It says, "No short-term rental contract shall be for a term of less than 24 hours." So does that mean if somebody's renting out their property for less than 24 hours, they don't need a permit?
No, I believe they still leave a comment for lawless if they're planning on doing a short-term rental there, and still consider it a short-term rental.
But I'm just worried that everything starts, that I read, at 24 hours. Right, so these people that are renting out their pool for the afternoon.
Because the intent is that it's for less than 24 hours, wouldn't be permitted, right?
I interpret it as.
Oh, you're not, oh, okay, is that?
Yes, it's either 24 hours or more.
More. Okay, so in other words, it's not telling them that if they're doing it for less than 24 hours, they don't need a permit?
I mean, they can't do it.
Okay, they can't do it at all, if you are. So the Swimplis will not be able to do it at all, correct?
The Swimpli, the Swimpli, just so that they're, you know, it's different. We addressed it somewhat in here. I know that there is some conversation to address it through the Department of Health with Swimpli, okay? Somebody's not here tonight, so I don't know how far that has gotten, but I know she addressed it somewhat in this, but it may be something we attack separately, or get a government agency involved with that. So that was me standing.
Okay, so the.
It's an ongoing issue in the county.
Yes.
Because they've become more and more popular. So they're trying to figure out on their end how they can enforce and handle, and we're going to have to think about what they do, because it is Department of Health violation.
Is this a fine line if you want a private public pool, which is not a private, we can be public pool, just go get it on the fire, it's not a responsibility, lifeguarding issues with the neighborhood, so it's going to cross a line there. They don't, it's going to have to wait out. Before we jump to God, we really need to get that waiting out.
Okay, okay, thank you. I still am concerned that after, I'm glad that they can only have one permit for 36 months, and then maybe you can get another, and then maybe you can get another next year. And there's a population locally that's buying properties for rentals as it is, and what it's doing largely unfortunately is bringing down the neighborhood. And three, you know, three, five, 10 years is not a long time for some people to keep gathering properties. Am I making myself clear without being too inappropriate?
Yes.
We've got a couple houses, two doors down and three doors down, that have just been bought for rentals. And I don't know if that, you know, if that's going to be a short term. Also, is it, does it specifically, it has less than 31 days, but is there, is there anything that specifically prohibits month-to-month rentals? You know, whether just they've got, they've got that somebody for 31 days, and then they got somebody else for 31 days, or they have the same person for 31 days, but then that somebody else is, the family says that they're running it to them. I don't know how. That will not have to look into, okay. And is the, I believe I saw on here as well that the maximum capacity is 12 people for any property. So that would also be something that I would like to have go over to the Swimpli as well, even though we're not specifically mentioned now. Okay, so if that is a separate issue, then that's, I think about all I have, let me just put my notes just in case. Oh, that the COVID enforcement officer has, is allowed to be there within 24 hours if there's a complaint or a problem? Does the code enforcement officer have to be there within 24 hours?
That was not written specifically in action.
I don't, I don't.
And I guess it probably has something to do more with the schedule and whether it can stay to 24 hours.
Yes.
Or needs to go to 36, or needs to go to 48, or so on and so forth.
And how many code enforcement officers do we have?
We have three.
It's three, okay.
We are fully staffed, which is part of the reason why we wanted to push this off a bit more, and then we heard residents sort of suggestions on it, and then we added where we could with that, but we are fully staffed and very happy with it.
And with the, since there's going to be overnight lodging, is there, is there going to be a code officer on call through, you know, and there is going to just be up to or forward to police?
Yes.
Okay.
Because that's how things work right now, anyway.
And they'll get a hold of the podium.
All right. Okay.
I also want to say that on page 3, under Short Term Rental Registration, we require temporary permit F, it says, "It shall be unlawful for any person landlord or absentee landlord to rent or offer to rent any portion of a residential block or use accessory thereto, including but not limited to pools, yards, tents, driveways, or backyards, without also granting the exclusive right of occupancy for the principal or dwelling located on the block." So it's, that's true.
Yes, which thrilled me until I read that, that I'm still worried about the less than 24 hours. Because, anyway, I would, I would again, please ask that you move to the shorter term than 24 hours. Hopefully the idea that somebody can have the checkout standard in hours, and then it's not 24 hours that we're going over the period.
Sorry, so we're talking about 24 hours, stay or the 24-hour code enforcement response time?
The stay.
The stay.
Sorry, I'm right out.
Thank you, Rob.
No, I think, to go back to your point, we're not permitting any rental of any property for less than 24 hours. We don't want it for three or six or 10.
Okay.
24 hasn't been a permit for them.
Okay, 24.
Anything less than that.
They can't get a permit.
That's correct.
Right. So that they, that means they can't have the check-ins.
Correct, they must have overnight, it has to be for a 24-hour period.
At least.
Right, overnight. And then they can't just rent the pool for the day, for five hours during the day, which is how I read this, because I said that good, because I think that needs to be said.
And Amy, we see that things aren't working, we can always amend this. You know, we know it's a bad amendment, we'll see how it goes, but we can say, oh, this is something we need to change. So it's not like it's, it is kind of written in stone, but.
Not really.
Well, I would imagine, because the sooner you get, the sooner it's complete, the sooner you can start.
Correct, forcing.
Exactly.
Right now, we can't do anything.
Exactly, exactly. Thank you very much for your time, and thanks again so much for listening. We'll be on the last, last meeting.
Thank you.
Anyone else here who joined us in person, had to speak on this local law? Anyone who joined us virtually? Once, twice, so, all right. Can I have a motion in a second then, to close the public hearing?
Motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Can I have a motion in a second now to issue a negative declaration relating to this local law?
Motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Now, can I have a motion in a second to adopt Local Law 10 of 2023 entitled Short Term Rentals, and to direct the village clerk to print a copy of the adopted law in this minutes?
Motion.
All right, press for a vote.
Trustee Gaziana.
Aye.
Trustee Hurley.
Aye.
Trustee Zerl.
Aye.
Trustee Here.
Aye. All right, introductory Local Law 18, 2023, ARB provisions, where revised law is still being worked on. So what I'm asking is if we can keep the public hearing open, but continue it, let's move the public hearing to August 10. Our attorney should be back in vacation by then, and then we can hopefully address it on 10 August. So can I have a motion in a second to continue the public hearing for meeting of August 10?
Motion.
Second. Third, third vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, once again, same thing with Bridge Preservation, Local Law 9, 2023, where revised law is still being worked on by our attorney. So if I can have a motion in a second to hold over, but continue the public hearing to our August 10 meeting? Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Introductory Local Law 13 of 2023, more building schedule. So we were scheduled to have a work session to discuss changes on, last, well, next Thursday, I guess, and did not have. So what I'd like to do is also, once again, reschedule the public hearing for this to our August 10 meeting, and our next meeting, what we'll do is we'll schedule the work session there. Please have a motion in a second to hold over the public hearing to our August 10 meeting? Motion. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to, here. Public hearing, Local Law, introductory Local Law 14 of 2023, moratorium continuing. Public hearing is being held to entertain public comments on introductory Local Law 14 of 2023, continuing the moratorium on certain permanent certificates of occupancy and approvals. Public notice was printed in the time travel record on July 6, 2023. Anyone in the public wishing to speak on the moratorium? Anyone who's joined us virtually? Can I have a motion in a second then, to close the public hearing?
Motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, can I now have a motion in a second to issue a negative declaration relating to the law, to this law?
Motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Now, can I have a motion in a second to adopt Local Law 11 of 2023, entitled Building Moratorium Continuing, and to direct the village clerk to print a copy of the adopted law in these minutes?
Motion.
Second. Vote for them.
Trustee Gaziana.
Well, aye.
Trustee Hurley.
Aye.
Trustee Zerl.
Aye.
Trustee Here.
Aye.
Mayor Jana.
Aye. Want to comment on agenda items only? If anyone wishes to speak on anything else within our agenda, now's your time to speak. You may head to the podium. Wants anybody who's joined us virtually, speak or hold your peace on items that are currently on the agenda. Closing now. Can I have a motion in seconds now, moving on to administrative business? Can I have a motion in seconds to accept receipt of the minutes of the meeting held on June 22nd, 2023?
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The clerk Poppen, please read abstract three.
Abstract three contains vouchers 2624-0137 to 2624-0302, total of $302,862 and $39,000.
All right, so can I have a motion in a second to approve Abstract Three as per?
Motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, fire department equipment requests. Can I have a motion in seconds to approve fire department equipment request 19 of 2023, totaling $21,114 for the purchase of CO gas detectors, re-regulators, one gas monitor, one e-combo tool with battery, two additional batteries, tool and service of the tool? Can I also have a motion in a second to approve at the fire department equipment request 20 of 2023, totaling $815.34 for the purchase of flares? At the fire department equipment request 21 of 2023, totaling $2,862.64 for the purchase of two safety lockets, patent patient tying structure of patient tying helmet harness, and two low-rev noises? So can I have a motion in a second to approve FDER 19, 20, and 21?
Motion. Second.
She's sorry, I'll give the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Prove unpaid leave of absence. Can I have a motion in a second to approve a request for unpaid leave of absence for Joseph Tetra, beginning July, he's MEO in the Highway Department, beginning July 24, 2023, for a period of one year?
Motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, on to all business, change order one, industrial renovations. All right, so the purpose of this change order is to, what they're proposing is to repair and the existing concrete floor in the new office, the best view, and the toilet area, and pour new concrete up to four inches thick to achieve a lot of floor. This would be the approval of change order one to the industrial renovations totaling $33,700. So can I have a motion in a second to approve that change order one?
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now the resolution of Climate Smart Committee pledged re-affirmation. So can I have a motion in a second to adopt the following resolution as presented, reaffirming the village's pledge to the Climate Smart Committee?
Motion.
Thank you. I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay, reaffirm name and the lead coordinator. Okay, so can I have a motion in a second to adopt the resolution as presented, reaffirming the creation of the Climate Smart Task Force, and reaffirming the coordinator as we say hence?
Motion.
Second. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations, you're still with us.
Thank you.
All right. My favorite part of the meeting, where we authorized me to sign stuff, so. Can I have a motion in a second to authorize me, the mayor, to sign 2023, 2024 Snow and Ice Dream County of Orange, or Snow and Ice River on certain county roads existing within Woodbury? I love doing this with ninety-three, brother.
Actually, I have a question, is that, is that per, that counts, or is that for the whole season? I was curious.
For the whole season.
Anyway.
Oh, we only do two roads for that. We do, we do God, the Berg and the Red.
Records can't.
Yeah.
Records are county roads.
Motion.
Motion, do I have a second? A second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Rob, for the response there. All right, more stuff to need to sign. Can I get a motion in a second to authorize me, the mayor, to sign the dental insurance renewal for 2023, 2024?
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Bond resolution, secret, so for the truck, well, project. So Desrae, why don't you explain what you mean?
So we are doing our best efforts to get a WIIQ, which is W-I-I-Q, which stands for something that I don't know. Wait, I know it. It's like the Water Infrastructure improvement act.
You knew she, you knew she had to hook that up and make sure.
We got. What was I going to say? I was just. She didn't know anything.
I know.
Put that down. It's a trivia.
I found it though, momentarily, I was, you know.
Just kidding.
So the grant, if we cannot, try to match, so we have to take out a bond to match, however, if we don't get the grant, we don't have a bond, but we have to have the bond resolution adopted, and we're, we don't have the grant. So it's kind of like hardcore stuff, that's what it is?
That's hardcore shit. People don't think that we're just borrowing from Winstonville here.
If we hopefully get the grant.
Yes, that's, that's the hope, but there are hamster mills we need to run through. So can I have a motion in a second for the village of Woodbury Board trustees to first assume itself as lead agency under secret for uncoordinated review?
Motion.
Second, uncoordinated. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, can I have a motion in a sec, motion and a second to type this action as unlisted?
Motion.
Second. Who did what? So we got uncoordinated. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Now, can I have a motion in a second to issue negative declaration?
Motion.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Now, can I have a motion in a second to adopt the following bond resolution as presented? The village of Woodbury, Arch Street in New York, to be adopted July 13, 2023, authorizing the issuance of bonds in a principal amount, actually $4,700,000, to finance the construction of disinfection improvements to the village waters. Result, the maximum cost there is $4,700,000, and appropriate set about for such purpose. Enthusiastic motion.
Yes.
Second, vote for?
Right.
Nope, you do it.
Yes.
You do, okay.
Trustee Graziano.
Aye.
Trustee Hurley.
Aye.
Trustee Sturriella.
Aye.
Trustee Here.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, you're in luck, that concludes regular business. So we move on to our favorite portion of the program here, which is public comment. So at this time, starting in Row 1, Jimmy, you have anything, go right ahead, introduce yourself as you're here. The other board is heard to move in with you.
Sadly. Sadly. My name is Jimmy K. And I just want to take this up to me. Thank you. Whatever happens, happens, but I'm good as air, yeah. I don't do board business, I don't do, I don't know, I don't do a lot of this. So I'm sure she's in great mood, I show up here and, like, and wow. Initially, it was like, what's, what's going on? I'm not getting any, any, any action. You know what, after all this time, you know what, I showed up here, I have a business. Try, prepare, and you care, and that, that's all we can spend. Now, I don't think we know, people show up, you know, see this, you see here, you know, this whole board, not just, you know, not just you and your mayor, but, you know, the results suck, disappointed, hopefully, you know, whatever happens, happens, but, you know, and so I thank you, you know, for me to come here every day, you know what, if, if I think you're useless, and I think you don't care, or screw you, I'd be home with my wife, okay? I'd be with my wife, watching TV, whatever it is, but I see everyone on this board cares. You know what, little, little edits, whatever, all the issues you guys are, they're, and you know what, I think that's what I thank you for.
Thank you. And you know what, you care also, because you come to Woodbury, you can spend 90% of work there, yeah, so.
I got nothing better than your wife passing out of the house. So Donna, thanks you.
Jimmy, you have one more.
You have one more. She can say, she can say.
Anyone else?
Jimmy, you have to start from the town hall, we need to talk about you.
Yeah. We're ready for the debate.
I thought you were going to say something else.
Where is like the ivory shoulder?
The ivory shoulder.
I have a resource, 99, 94% of these.
Hello, Lisa.
How are you? How are you?
Very good.
I wanted to thank the board, as always, you guys are super supportive of everything our Climate Smart is doing. They've kind of taken the summer off, and we'll be full steam ahead in the fall.
So let me just stop you right there, Lisa's idea of taking the summer off, she's doing a seminar next Wednesday, so yeah, she's taking the summer off by doing a seminar at the senior center, so yeah, okay.
I'm recording stuff, but yeah, so next, he is correct, next Wednesday, at the senior center, we are hosting a monarch pollinator informational centers for families session. We have somebody from Orange Environment and Hudson Valley Pollinators, she's going to do a lecture on monarchs, because our mayor took the monarch pledge, so we are supporting him with a, a seminar that will give him the points for the pledge. We have a little making tape, where you can walk along with a little, mil- mil- weed planter and stuff, so. And also, our Climate Smart is working on a fall cleanup, so it's with supplies. We're going to base it right out of village hall here, that's September 12. Awesome, it's in the fall, but on September 23rd, right here at village hall, we are hosting a repair cafe, and so for people that don't know what a repair cafe is, we are on the ask for people that are fixers, Joe Vincents, professional electricians, woodworkers, you name it, we need their help to come, and then people bring broken items as boosters, throwing them out, most likely it's a lamp, vacuum, we do have a gentleman that's willing to fix bicycles, we have a lady that's coming to repair jewelry, and I'm still on the ask for other fixers, but, so that's a big, that's a big plus, because there's not a lot of repair cafes, but it keeps, I don't, of, so. And we met with.
Senator.
Senator, so he was hopeful, was knowing what we're on board with, and then we are also working very, some of you guys see our gardens starting to flourish. So we do have a couple of pollinator gardens that are full steam ahead, and we're looking to work with the cemetery of the Highlands to start another one, and that's where we're at, people's house.
Just so while you're there, Tara and I are going to go next week, we're all going to be there.
Awesome.
At the seminar, I guess, 19. The meeting that you were asking about, just give me a week or so, which is everything that we've got going on here with the renewable energy.
Yes, she's actually going to do a presentation at our Climate Smart meeting, so we're just going to, yeah, we'll just zoom him in, it's 15 minutes, and so, even if we record it and then show it to you later, so.
Okay.
Very good, and thank you again for.
For the repair company?
Yes.
People that bring their own tools?
100%.
All of them.
Yes, so what I'll try and get is, yes, tools that I can't get, they don't have a tool share kind of thing, but what I'll have to purchase or ask for donations for are the little items, so like if you have a broken lamp, like a lamp repair kit is standard kind of thing, with a plug and all that, so I have to get some of those. like a lamp repair kit is the standard kind of thing with a plug and all that. So I have to get some of those supplies.
And people have to sign up before or just show up?
Just show up.
So how do you know what to order?
No. So what I'll do is I will place an ad. I'll do flyers based on who we have as repair.
Got it.
So I hope to know by then who's repairing stuff. So if I have a woodworker, then I can advertise that I'm a woodworker. I already know I'm a tool repair person. So that's what I would announce to bring. Also, most of, some of the fixers are Joe Vixens and everything. So if you brought something, most likely, they could have missed. Right. Or tell you what part to get and then you come back to another repair cafe. So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Anyone else in the public who should speak?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor of Village Hall. Sorry if I sound like I'm long-winded, but I'm gonna be what I call a sujeto. Sorry, my brain.
You're naming these moments and CJ.
First, I want to take a moment and say thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I've always respected all of you and I've always appreciated what you've all done. Let's just get to the point. This past week, we had major storm for Hyla. I'll use the word major and say the word catastrophic for Highland Falls in West Florida. In that time, where was the communication? When a storm like this hits, we look to the leader. Who is the leader? Our leader is our mayor, our village board. Granted, we didn't lose power. We didn't lose any of that. Had we lost it, there wouldn't have been any communication. There was no what, where, when, why, or emergency communications, no directions. Was air shelter set up? Were the roads open? The residents in this village, this town, look to a leader. And that is the mayor. The PD was busy handling falls. The fire department was up to their waist in ditches and water. The ambulance was knee-deep in water on Route Six, helping stranded motorists. They were also handling falls in town. Rob, he had his guys out working as soon as the area was safe. Thank you, Rob. Again, were there posts on road closures? Maybe I missed it. I found out there was food available at the firehouse. The ladies auxiliary was able to set up a shelter if it was needed. And the village knew that. Debbie from Woodbury, ambulance called the highway department, New York State DOT, to get road closure information and started the posting. We, first responders, rely on that to get to the falls. That is important. But isn't that the mayor's job or the supervisor's job? Who knows? What if we were Highland Falls? Where would you be? Mayor Joe in Highland Falls, he had a mess of his own. Jim Schufus was there. Steve Newhouse was there. Okay, maybe that was just a photo op opportunity for them. But they were there. So Cornwall has a Facebook page called Cornwall, New York, Office for Emergency Management. They can make continual posts on road conditions. What would it take for Woodbury to have one? How long would it take for us to get one? Or will that just be a kick the bucket down the road between the town and the village? Maybe we should look into getting it. It would be very important. Sorry, Mr. Mayor. I have the utmost respect for you, but if I were a school teacher, you're great on this test. I'll leave that alone. You can grade that.
Just so you know where I was during the storm. I was at the firehouse. I was at Park Avenue. I was at Florence. I was at Oakland. I was on Washington. I was on Settlement. I was on the mall home park. I was not at home. I literally drove around Woodbury. I respect you for that, but my point was, a lot of people have said it, but nobody came here to say it. We looked for Facebook posts for communication and there wasn't. Maybe I missed it. Maybe a flood was missing.
The only communication we put out there was to stay off Florence because we had so many road closures and floodings and whatnot. That was the only information put out. There was no areas that normally were flooded, not flooded, and there were a whole host of new areas that were flooding around this. This was, as to coin or to quote my father, this was one for the falls. This is one, nothing like this has ever kind of happened before. We've had Hurricane Sandy and Hurricane Irene come to here, where we had major rain. Now, like I said, I was not at home. I literally drove around Woodbury. I couldn't even get back to my family. You know where I live. So I couldn't even make it back there because drought broke in the Washington. I had to wait for literally, had a few hours, actually, planning board chair offered to take me home because I could not make it in my little autumn back anywhere. So that is how I deal with catastrophes. I basically, and I do this for everyone, just drive, looking for where the problems are. And I was on the phone with Rob. I was on the phone with Mike and the fire department. So I knew what they were up against because they had at least twenty-four calls that came in.
Well, that's how we found out back and forth what the roads were. Mayor.
I saw the cops guys. I saw the fire department guys. Well, I had already made, I went out to PD and one of the lessons I was making.
I saw all your guys. I was following.
Facebook is very much secondary to me. My department were in the middle of emergency. But that being said, I already had made a post. The mayor already made a post. The mayor was aware of the roads that we already had reopened before Debbie even called me at the hospital department. There was already posts on the highway page. There was already posts on the village pages. So with all due fairness to the mayor, the mayor was out there communicating with me. I gave him a list of roads we had closed. No street did those roads close. The water ran down and reopened. Everything was opened back up by six feet deep.
Nothing against you, Rob.
No, no, I understand. I just, I didn't defend him in that aspect that he was, he was out there himself. I wasn't even driving him around. He was out in his own car. I don't suppose the communication to the public was. But, like, so. And I noticed that and I wasn't the only one that saw it. I'm just getting paid for that for this, but when I see it, they look to the leader and, you know.
Again, also in Valley Forge, if I'm down in Valley Forge, I'm gonna try to make a motion. You know your cell service down there.
I don't know what was in Valley Forge. Rock's that big.
Yeah. So I mean, it's hard for me to, I, I, when I get back to my office, I'll try to upload something or share something from the PD or something. But honestly, the PD was keeping everybody well informed. So I didn't think, I didn't think it was necessary to have a secondary out there.
I'm not saying it because of me, because I have the inside look to all that.
I understand. I understand.
Yeah. Alright, Maria here.
Maria Hunter. Been in this Woodbury for forty-three years. I'm October 17th, seventeen-plus years of Woodbury animals. When you see a storm out there, common sense should kick in. Stick a helmet on the road. Stay home, be safe. People needing to come home, I get it. But then, an ambulance needs to be dispatched. It comes through the police department. I know this for a fact. If there's an issue, the police will tell us on the radio. Road is closed. Be careful. Use this alternate. The police communicate with the ambulance. They communicate with the fire department. They let you go when they dispatch you. They get the fire department. Hey, we have an issue over here. I get it. Everyone was hot, a little cold because of what happened this weekend. Forget it. It's overdone with. Everyone in this board, in this room, the department heads, they did their job well. We didn't lose electricity. We didn't lose any lives. We were fortunate. If we would have another hour of rain, like we had, we had one, within twenty minutes. Some of you saw, I posted on my video on Facebook, if we would have had another forty-five minutes to an hour, you would have been getting a call from me because I would have been unable to get out of the house. We knew to stay home. We knew to stay off the roads because you get a system like that and you see what's going on. Use your common sense. And I appreciate this board, the department heads, thank you for what you've done. And the fire department, the ambulance corps, and the police department. Everyone is an unsung hero in my eyes. But next time we have a storm like this, listen, someone tells you to stay off the road. Steve Newhouse put us, our county state of emergency, rather quickly, and got out there. And those people who were out on the roads, they began to see the, the Facebook page. But step back, take a deep breath, and let's get on. Let's forget what happened this weekend, whether you're right, wrong, or indifferent. We move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Maria. Uh, anyone else here wishing to speak? Anyone who joined us virtually?
Once. Nice.
Okay. Moving on to department comments, starting with Nikki Phillips.
I am helping there.
Alright, Rob.
I just wanted to thank my guys for all the hard work and staff members, I should say, for all the hard work they put in during the storm. We had approximately eighteen locations that we were trying to get to all at once. But we handled it well, I thought. The short period of time, we got about, in our gauge of the shot, was about four point seven five inches of rain in a little less than three hours. Again, nothing but, uh, Island Falls had, I was up there today with some of our staff. We did a little shared service with them today. Three Woodbury crew members were assisting Island Falls today. They're very appreciative of that. We'll probably be back up again with them on Monday. Just send a couple guys up and help them out as much as we can. Anybody that hasn't been up there, the pictures do we know justice? It's, it's terrible. But I just wanted to thank my guys. I want to thank Nikki's guys for, you know, working together, you know, trying to make the best out of the terrible situation.
Thank you, Rob. Mike Penella.
Good evening. I have no comment. Thank you.
Alright. Uh, board comments, starting with CJ Rudson.
Where do I start? Alright, a couple things. First of all, I'm gonna, again, I'll echo what Rob has said and thank them for all the work you guys did. Thank Nikki for, I know, keeping the sewer patch from overflowing everywhere and preventing people in more crap. The, the, what you want is an effort in and of itself. So we appreciate that. We had, and as much as I like you, John, you are dead wrong. And I'm gonna, and, and I'm really upset about it. And I'm, I'm gonna, and I'm trying to keep myself involved in about this, but we had a storm that came through that was a four-hour event that did something that never has been done in history. You had, and he was on the ground. I was talking to, you know, messaging him, talking to him through text. He was on the ground, in the middle of the storm, running around because trying to help people on individual basis who are getting really flooded. He cares. He was out there putting his own life and everything in jeopardy to be at the scene. Not worrying about posting on Facebook. I'm the guy who posts everything on the wall on Facebook. I didn't even think that that was necessary at that point because it was such a short-term event. That's historic. And nobody predicted it. And I'm gonna give you some facts to make you understand how historic and how quick this happened. Because I have, I have access to river flows and lake flows and whatnot in my other piece of my career. You know, take the Round Lake River, went from a nineteen million gallon a day flow to a one point eight billion gallon flow rate in four hours. That's the amount of water that came back. That's, that's the scope and that's what you're looking at. There's not a Facebook post in the world that's gonna stop what the billion gallons of water are pumping where it goes. Doesn't matter. It just came out of nowhere on a weird day that nobody predicted. They said we're gonna have heavy rains, this outbreak, any forecast. No one predicted it. I know better. And I'm gonna tell you I know better than no one predicted it because this is what I do for a living. And if somebody would have predicted this storm, I would have an emergency center set up. That might freshen. We didn't because nobody predicted this. This was not in anybody's cards. So to come up here and denigrate Andrew like that is completely uncalled for. The man is out there risking his own life in the middle of the storm to go and look at people's damage and trying to console them in their damage. I am just completely upset and completely disappointed in that, Abe. We can work on, if you want to work on communication in the future, come talk with us. And I will work with you on anything you want about communication in the future. But when we're in the middle of a storm event that's that big of an emergency, I'm not worried about Facebook. I'm worried about the police knowing. I'm worried about the fire department being in communication. I'm worried about Rob's guys and Mickey's guys being in communication with us to make sure that your sewer, your toilets flushed, your water gets, your water comes on and the roads get cleaned. That's what we're worried about. Not worried about who's commenting anywhere on Facebook. That's absolutely ridiculous. And I'm sorry you might disagree with me one hundred percent. I'm gonna stop now.
Thank you, CJ. Uh, Nick Perrelli.
Trustee Ferrelli. Thank you. I just want to thank everybody for coming out to the meeting, both virtually and in person. And I want to thank all the first responders and everybody that was out there on Sunday, doing a good job, keeping everybody safe. Pretty proud of these people. And you're basically doing what had to get down going that storm. That's pretty much what I'm hoping to say.
Alright, Trustee Ferrelli. Uh, Trustee Suriel.
I'd like to go on a different route. I'd like to just mention that after all that rain, sprinklers are running the next morning. Okay? It's driving me insane. So look at your sprinklers. If you do not have a water sensor, which is a relatively inexpensive thing to install, please turn them on. Okay? I walked out at a quarter to seven in the morning to go out for a walk. I'm not saying, but I could see sprinklers running. And I'm like, really? After all that rain? What a waste of restorers' money and just a total disregard for what we're trying to do here, which is conserve water. I want to thank you guys because I was out and I saw you guys. I saw your guys out trying to secure the roads. I saw your guys out. I saw everybody out and about. And the response time that you, we happened to be out and like I was waiting for the rain to stop. I'm out with my son and I'm like, okay, we're just gonna wait here. We're just gonna wait here. And it just never stopped. And then, you know, the state of the roads, you came on the phones. And we were, we were close. We were in, we were over by Alden. And I'm like, waiting. My husband, I'm literally just like trapped. I'm afraid to get in the car. But once we, I just decided, alright, it seemed to let up for a few minutes. I said, let's just try to get home. And we did. But I could see you guys out. And that's, and that was earlier in the storm before, like, it really started coming down. And I just want to ask, Nikki, where are we on water restriction at this point?
We're at seven to nine PM.
Okay.
And the reason for that is our water wells haven't gone up. They're holding its own. And as soon as they go up, I will notify the mayor and we will see if we can get a break.
It's because of the sprinklers. Because people, water, because they have a storm? That's why.
Well, sprinklers are during the storm, which is funny. Driving by somebody's house and you see the sprinkler.
Yeah. It's all that water.
I mean, like, the amount of water I had on my property was unbelievable. I mean, and we have, you know, landscaping and drains. And I remember the steps coming from my yard. After the storm was over, I walked outside and I said to my husband, look at this. And either side of the step, just a stream of water. We had streams in different various locations, which now we know we probably need to address just for the future. But again, like, to walk out at a quarter to seven the next morning after, and we'd had so much rain before then. But that amount of rain in such a short period of time, someone has, I mean, it's just mind-blowing. I mean, that you would even want to pay for it and just not even not care, you know? I mean, mine have been off for two weeks and there's just no reason. I think we're getting more rain again on the weekend, you know?
The man's still high, so.
The man's high, but the water, they're still, we're holding on, but we're not.
Our water table is heating right now.
It's heat?
We're warming really well.
Okay. Okay. Because people do ask, like, why are we still in water restriction with all the rain? And that's why I wanted to ask the question. And I see the signs still posted, so I.
Yeah.
Yeah, but, you know.
Rain sensor's twenty-five bucks a year.
Not to mention that they were at quarter to seven AM, not PM, which is where the restriction, you know, where you can have water, you know, in the morning.
Thank you, batteries.
Rain sensor, no, rain sensor, it's, rain sensor is a really simple item. It sits in the rain. It sits in the rain. It's a little plastic, white plastic thing. Inside, there's a bunch of like cloth, cloth washers. And they swell up when it rains and it's trying to cut off the neutral of the sprinklers. It's like, yeah. It'll turn on, it's gonna blow. That's all done. It's that simple. When it dries out enough that it's drying up the water again, it shrinks and allows the electrical current to run. It's very simple device. Two wires, a little bolt assist, 25 bucks. It, it's over.
Thank you for explaining that. Please, because I probably don't. I just know you should help.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
The mayor took the words right out of my mouth, the sprinklers. Thank you. Uh, Rob, thank you. Thank you guys and your, and your team. I mean, I don't know how you do it with ease and it's as if you do this every day. So thank you.
Good. Go wire your parents.
I think so.
I have.
It's impressive. You're not panicked. I see you out there. I have, and even my hack goes off too. Obviously, first responders, the same. Um, as soon as the fire trucks were coming back, they were going right back out. I wonder if they came back. Same for the ambulance and police. I don't think that words are gonna describe how grateful uh, we are to you all for in our kind of need, you're running towards the danger, running through all, up and down. Um, two comments. One, if the power were out, John, this is directed at you. You wouldn't have been the first person on the phone on our, because he has a direct contact there. And he is the most communicative person about power managers that I think in history of public boards, of municipal boards. Um, and he's gotten that as a compliment before. And that's something that, um, I can assure you, it isn't true that he would have not commented about that because of the nature of, of using power and the nature of it in terms of life safety. Number one. Number two, I think your comment about having an emergency management page or group is a great comment. Um, I don't disagree with you. I just don't know how that's coordinated. So I'm happy to look into it with Cornwall. I don't know if it's a separate entity. I don't know if there are paid employees that do this. Um, I, I did have the same thought when I saw that they were posting. I'm like, who is this? Who runs this? Is it a government board? Is it a separate, you know, and I know like a lot of counties have that. I've never seen it on a municipality level. So that's an interesting comment. So thank you for that. Um, but I will say, due to the unprecedented nature, a little bit of leeway. I get it. You're, you're an emergency responder, first responder. Um, then Maria makes an excellent point. The police are well aware of what roads are closed when. Because as Rob stated, it's very fluid. It's very quick. Even if he would have posted, it would have been outdated information. So I think the maybe there should be, and I think they're both on a one point, a, uh, a, you know, response, an emergency response tactical team or something.
That goes more days between the town and the village?
Yeah.
That incident was for COVID, right? Wasn't this done?
We have an emergency response plan. I, I listen, everyone's had all the different.
Right.
I don't think that Woodbury, we don't, we didn't lose any Woodbury roads.
Right. To building those doubts and.
I don't think we got to the point where, I mean, the state lost roads, the county lost roads. We didn't lose any arid pressure. So.
No, you're right. You're right. I'm just.
We have a disaster plan.
We do have a disaster.
We have a disaster plan. We have a disaster plan. We have a free vacation. We have plans, but again.
Didn't want that. No. Yeah, I hear you. So that's why I think it's per se, you know, it's perspective. Everybody's perspective and reverse response perspective. You feel a little bit different because you're out and we're all home. Um, but I, I do take your point about management and having a centralized communication. I take that. But, um, I think, I mean, I've already heard of Andrew considering he communicates about everything. And the fact that he was out in an orange way, um, where most people were either not New York or, or in the comfort of their own homes. So thank you. I know you've done a thankful job. Um, and I think that you do a really good job at, at what's in your career. So thank you, Justin.
All right. Thank you, Deputy Mayor York.
That's right. So every meeting, every meeting I announce when there's an election, every meeting I beg people to vote. And turnout was pretty crap. 250 people, 10% right? Not even 10% of the Woodbury voters. I mean, I, I don't know what else to do. I don't know, you know, social media is a wonderful thing, but it's also a horrible thing. I mean, people get picked on there constantly every day and say something and I don't wish to say anything because I don't like to get picked on. I can't avoid it if what's possible. But this man is on Facebook 24/7. Sometimes it makes me cringe. Um, I looked at Mr. Powell while you were talking and he did put a post on at that time. He did say, stay off the roads. There are hazards. Um, but like CJ said, it was a four-hour event. By the time you got home, the water had receded and people were cleaning up. So, uh, I, I just say fairish that people have falls. I mean, maybe we're just decimated. I've been in touch with the town where they are. Their office was up the water. We're down Main Street. Uh, so she's got quite the, the neck around up there. And Rob's constantly in conversation with me to go to Super Ten over there. Just also remember when it comes to Facebook in an election year, super graders from the mayor are gonna post things because they want to get a lead weapon in it. But I, I remember correctly, I think Cornwall has a heated supervisor for a while. Yeah. So, you know, Facebook, social media is a wonderful thing, but it's also a poison. People use it just to get their name out there for election time whereas.
And nobody backjacks.
Yeah. Whereas he's been on Facebook for, what, four years now and more now.
Yeah.
But I didn't take any selfies. I didn't take any selfies in the buy.
No.
She done that. And John, you know I'm gonna do that. I'm gonna like, yeah, I am. I'm gonna store it.
I said it's a photo op. I'm not a liar, guys.
I didn't write that. I just.
I did say it.
But that means that everyone's.
It was gonna be.
Everyone's gonna have to throw up in the air and just tell it from that way. These are titles that I have.
It was gonna be for a photo op.
But you should have done it, right?
Okay.
The tree's coming down behind you.
Yeah. I'm gonna be missed, Rob. I'm gonna be missed.
I was just trying to get you out of the way.
All right. Thank you. So, uh, let me begin by just, first of all, there are a lot of people that this was a historic storm. I was walking on the town side as I was driving around. I had the Blue and Browns guys bouncing all over Woodbury. Of course, you have the police department bouncing all over Woodbury. It was really between our, the town side and the village side, in my opinion, was just a perfect synergy of everybody helping the residents. Moving on to our volunteer first responders. I gotta tell you, the amount of calls that came across my phone from the Woodbury ambulance corps, which I think you had about 16 calls that four-hour stretch. And my fire department had about 24 calls. So when I had stopped over here to this building, they literally had a man, a Sean Murphy stationed here and they were directing people at. So I want to thank them. They, my, our volunteers of the ambulance and fire are exactly that, the volunteers. So they don't get paid to run out in the middle of the night. They don't get paid to deal with storms like we just had. They just do. And for that, they really, a thank you just doesn't seem sufficient. To my part, yes. You know, I, I joke about it. I, I say it all the time that I am legally obligated to mention how great the highway department is at every meeting. But they truly are. Um, Rob kept in constant communication with me. I kept in communication with him. We had, uh, somebody's papers washed out on Sutherland. With, and I'm standing out there with two other neighbors trying to dig, pull papers out of the drainage. And we had a crew of, of highway personnel over on Washington Street. I think, because that was the major, you call the staff back there. I couldn't even get to there. So they came over and Rob put them right to work trying to get that order done. You know, listen, the water sewer guys and the highway guys are paid. But this is something that overtime just is not good enough for me. It, it's, you're risking your life out there during this or these snowstorms that these two gentlemen have their personnel working through. Once again, thank you just does not seem like enough. I am very proud to have this group of men and women working for the village of Woodbury and working for our residents. They did a phenomenal job getting us through this. And I know that they've both been picking up pieces since Sunday of everything that needs to now be fixed. And everything that is delayed now because we're basically fixing storm damage. So on behalf of the village of Woodbury, I want to thank each and every one of them. So let's, let's talk about the thing element in the room. About the election for the Republican primary. I did not win. And it's a gut shot, but nobody really came out. So with that being said, I am still listed as a third party candidate. And I am here to announce tonight that I continue to be that third party candidate. I like, I love this job. I really do. It is, I like being able to sit down and where there's a problem, deal with problem. And there are problems in the village of Woodbury that we've been dealing with. And you know that because if you come to our meeting or read the agenda or read the minutes of the meeting, you'll see that the village of Woodbury is addressing as many issues as we possibly can. And there are a lot of issues. We have issues with sewer and water. And we have issues with recruitment for a fire department and ambulance. And that makes it kind of difficult for us to really get everything done because we need to focus on that infrastructure first. And that is basically what we have been doing or I've been doing with this great board for the last year and a half. So I am not about to give up. I'm not about to put my tail between my legs and go, it's over. It's not. Okay? I feel I've done the job. I feel, unless you're not gonna make everybody happy. Uh, if you could, that would be something else. But I am gonna continue to work my tail along between now and the end of this year. And hopefully the voters of Woodbury look past, um, some of the things that are being set out there that understand that bipartisanship is the only way to get things done in a municipality of this level. So if they didn't like that I endorse certain Democrats, tough cookies is the way I look at it because I don't care. What I care about is that we have a boatload of things that gotta get taken care of, especially on that. Like between you and I, I always say I neglect Rob. But could, and I focus on Mickey's departments.
He pointed the finger at me.
I, I don't.
Aren't you going to meet?
You're the scourge of my life. And I like you a lot.
That's why you wanted me here.
I did. Yes, I did. But we have a lot to, to, to address. And this board, I, I am very blessed to have this woman to my right and this group of people to my left, and those department heads and volunteers downstairs and volunteers on Route 32 that we can get things accomplished. So I am in this thing. I am in this thing to win. And that's really all I have to say. So, thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. This is great.
There you go.
The queen.
Anyway, all right. So without any further business to discuss, comments received. I will accept the motion of the second to adjourn this meeting. I wish you had something else. Motion of the second to adjourn the meeting.
Motion, second.
All the favor. All right. Our next scheduled meeting is July 27. Should not be too bad for meeting. Rent patients anyways. Anyway.